Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have members of the committee, myself, Chair from Fourth District, Councilwoman Burnett of the Eighth District, Councilman Costello of the Eleventh District, Councilman Glover of the Thirteenth District, Councilwoman Porter of the Tenth District, and Councilman Stokes of the Twelfth District. I understand Councilwoman Ramos is running a little bit late. I'm sure she'll be on in a moment. From members of the Office of the President, do we have Nikki Thompson online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stagman? Aaron DeGraffan Reed? Okay, and representing the Mayor's Office, do you have Natasha Mihy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Natasha. And Nina Themelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. So this afternoon, we are actually changing up a little bit. We're not going to hear Bill 21-0001. We're actually going to hear that at a later date. We're going to move right on to to Bill 21-0050, Burka Alarms Registration and Regulation False Alarms for the purpose of revising the fees assessed to alarm system users for repeated false alarms, altering the number of false alarms within a year that will result in the placement and the placement of the premises on into a no-response status, requiring that alarm system monitors make certain additional attempts to verify the need for police response, making certain stylistic changes and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 22, 2021, and the bill was sponsored by the Council of the President on behalf of the administration. Do you have any comments from the administration? Or BPD?
Thank you, Chairman. This is Eric Malasan, Chief of Staff for the Baltimore Police Department. I again want to thank the Council President and the administration for bringing this bill and bringing this matter to the attention of of the council, because this is, this is a key area where a lot of our resources are dedicated to responding to effectively what are non-emergencies. When we talk about reimagining our resources, how we manage our resources at the department, this is the first in many steps that the department is partnering with the Mayor's Office and trying to visualize how we better manage those resources. False alarms affect the department to the tune of about 18,000 instances per year. Our goal with this legislation is to create something that's more in line with what we see in other jurisdictions across the country. You know, we've been able to, I think, have as many questions answered as possible, but I'll just ask that the members support our initiative on this. The department is in firm support of the Mayor's Initiative and the Council President's Bill. We stand ready to answer any questions and stand by our bill report as well.
Thank you, Eric. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. Please state your name as we announce each agency. First, we're going to start off with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietre from Baltimore City Law Department. The Law Department stands by its report. It has approved the bill for formal legal statutory.
Thank you, Elena. Next, we've I'm going to skip the Police Department unless you have something further to say. Thank you. We'll move on to the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. This is Executive Assistant Chief Roman Clark. And the Party Department stands by its bill. We have no objections to the Council Bill 21-0050.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our previously submitted bill report. We defer to the Police Department.
Excuse me. Thank you, Stephanie. Finally, I have the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James, Legislative Engagement Need for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report and we support this legislation. Thank you.
Awesome. I'm going to move on to public testimony if we have any on this bill. We're not, we're actually not going to vote on the bill today. We'll be able to discuss the amendment that was put forward, and we we touched on it in the last hearing, but I want to have an opportunity to flush out some of the thoughts, ideas, and concerns about the amendment as put forward. But we'll move on to public testimony for now. To that end, if we can set that up. Awesome. So committee staff will coordinate the public testimony. Please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. It's located on the bottom right. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they're unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, are there any folks that would wish to testify? Please use the raise hand function. Seeing no testimony, we're going to move forward to the phones. Anything on the phones? Okay. We have one caller. You've just been unmuted. Do you have any testimony on this bill? Okay, no testimony. With that, I want to jump into the amendments. We have one amendment up for consideration. And we'll get that posted soon, so folks can take a look at it. So this is offered by the Council President's Office. If I'm someone from the Council President's Office, Nikki, if you could talk us through what this amendment is trying to do and how it affects the bill, that'd be really helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. To briefly explain this amendment, the purpose is to actually create a real waiver. So the previous language would have waived the fee, but the second charge would not have been treated as the first. So this language will specifically allow for the waiver to be basically a true waiver. The fee for the second visit will not be charged like a second fine. It'll be charged as the first.
Interesting. Thank you, Nikki. And I recall this doesn't have there was an amendment before that had a component for a payment plan. Do?
We discussed trying to do a payment plan, but during the last hearing, the Mayor's Office, Department of Finance went into their reasoning for why and that was something that we weren't necessarily able to implement at the moment. But it was something that we did discuss. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the amendment as put forward?
Mr. Chair, this is Councilwoman Ramos here. I'm sorry I'm in route, and I apologize to the committee and to you. So if I understand this correctly, if it's yeah, I'm just getting out of the stony run, so I look a mess too, and I'm sorry about that. It sounds, so this is the waiver for the first fee. Does that mean that then there are six tries or there's still five tries? Like five alarm, alarm limit?
This amendment doesn't increase the number of tries. It doesn't change the number of tries. It is more directed towards making sure that when the a fine is eventually assessed, that it's assessed on the scale of the first one being a full waiver, not just we didn't come out, but we still basically charged the fee this first time.
Okay, thanks. I'll have to look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is, I have a question.
Councilwoman Porter, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. This question is for BPD. I know I had spoken about I had spoken about like implementation guides that would be associated with this particular policy. Are you all? Are you all thinking about developing that moving forward?
Just to clarify, Councilmember, are you, is your question directed towards the bill? The entire bill or just this amendment? I want to make sure.
Oh, no, it's to the entire bill.
Could you, could you reframe your question? I want to make sure I understood it.
Yeah, so I spoke with I spoke with you all about, you know, having implementation guys associated with this policy, like what's your rollout plan? So I want to make sure that you all have enough time to develop that. From what I understand, you all have 120 days post-bill signing. I shared that I did not think that was enough time to properly, probably develop that implementation guide, leveraging stakeholders, gathering information from stakeholders, et cetera, because this type of you know, this type of, this type of change, while, while it may seem small departmentally in the community whereby we have, you know, people that need to utilize 911 services and there's, there's a concern about residents actually, you know, getting service calls from 911 service. I want to make sure that we are prioritizing the education and the implementation of this particular policy.
Absolutely, Councilmember. I appreciate that. We are making this a priority. The Mayor's Office is going to be assisting with our rollout of this as well. So the idea is, again, to ensure that the public understands that what we're really trying to do is free up our officer time so that they can go to actual emergency calls for service. Part of the goal here is not simply to stop doing work, but to really free up the officer's availability for real emergencies. And again, we're looking at the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th time where we're going to the same address in a calendar year. That's the, the measure that we're trying to redirect those resources, keep them free so that they don't have to respond to those addresses that are not, you know, becoming compliant with whatever's needed to adapt. Again, the 120 days in our experience, you know, is going to be, we believe, sufficient time to properly message this. We're going to make sure that we engage not just traditional media, but social media and all the other community groups. You know, part of BPD's role will be ensuring that these are announced at, you know, community meetings, the majors and the districts are going to be pushing this message out at their meetings on a monthly basis. So we're going to create a coordinated strategy and do that in coordination with the Mayor's Office as well to make sure we're getting the word out, as we're absolutely making that a priority. Of course, passage, of course, passage of the bill by the Council.
Sure, sure. Mr. Chair, may I have another question as well?
Do, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So to your, to your point, sir, I want to make sure that you all are using non-traditional means as well, given that most people do not attend community meetings. Most people do not have that connection to city government as, as we may think they do. I want to encourage you all to use non-traditional means as well, leveraging public-private partnerships with hospitals, DSS, you know, really thinking through what that, what that communication and promotion infrastructure looks like. My second question has to do with, you know, one of the questions that I have related to vendor management, you know, with the passes of this bill, have you all talked with or shared your, your, you know, this new policy with vendors? My only concern has to do with once people kind of like go through those five times. Each time, from what I understand, and I'm likening this, you know, if any type of business comes out like Comcast or anything like that, that the resident has to pay that in order for a technician to come out, look at their service, and evaluate whether there is an issue. Are you all talking with vendors to see if there can be some sort of rebate and/or forgiveness for those fees once these technicians come out?
So I would defer to the Mayor's Office on coordination with, with the outside entities, but in a general sense, you know, a lot of those agreements are agreements between the member who is obtaining the service and those vendors. And, you know, some of them do speak to, you know, house call fees, but others have no fees but a blanket, you know, monthly recurring service that inclusive, that's inclusive of those items. It really just depends on the nature of their agreements. I will say that, you know, when we look at best practices, we do see the support generally of a lot of management companies when it comes to the right number of times before really making sure that the, that the person is given chances. So we feel like we've done that with, with that five times as being the right standard. But I would defer to the Mayor's Office if any formal conversations we're having with there's some associations associated with vendors that, that are in this space.
Sure. Thank you.
I'd like to actually follow up on Councilwoman Porter's question about outreach and ways that we get the message out about this. Have we or do we have any plans to specifically go back to the folks that have been offenders in the past and how are we doing that?
So we do have that information available, right? So we collect this information. We know the addresses that we're talking about. Our first goal is that upon passage of this legislation is to return to those specific addresses that we know might be affected, especially if the number of instances have occurred that, that is beyond that, that five threshold in multiple years, right? So like those are the ones we're really going to have targeted communications with. That'll be, you know, done in a, in some formal, some less formal ways with our, with our officers, you know, again, as far as a community engagement model, showing up there and saying, hey, look, this is, this is a new change to the law. We know this is a problem addressed. What can we do to help in fixing the issue here? We want this to be a problem-oriented policing model more than just a straight enforcement or not enforced issue. And so there is definitely an opportunity for that kind of engagement, and we do have the ability to do that. We're not going to put cart before horse. We are going to make those overtures now, but we do want to make sure that we're doing that in coordination with a larger strategy. Because again, we want people to have a measure of responsibility in managing these alarms and working in partnership with the companies that service those alarms to make certain that if it isn't, if it is a alarm, that it's not so frequent that it's drawing our resources in the way that it's currently doing.
Yeah, and then as a question, a follow-up question to that, when you mentioned the companies, are we at all working with them to to notify new users as they sign up so that folks are aware of the new realities should, should this pass?
So again, I would defer to the Housing Department on the registration process because that would be included in that. But absolutely, I mean, the idea is that there's the rules of the, the rules of the game are, as I understand it, provided in that registration package. But I would defer to the housing folks to tell us about what that registration process looks like and what information they receive.
I'll be a little more pointed, not just notifying the companies, but if the companies can use their networks to notify their customers.
Oh, I mean.
Mr. Chair, if I may add to Mr. Malicon's comments about administration. Yeah, so I would just add that we are absolutely committed to doing the outreach necessary to make sure that the alarm system companies and the alarm system users are aware of these changes in laws. As Mr. Malicon stated earlier, there are specifics to the individual contracts that we are not privy of, but our overall goal is to make sure that there is community involvement here because ultimately we do want people to address any problematic issues. So if the user is having problems with their alarm system, we want to make sure that both the user and the alarm company are doing what they can to address that issue. And that's our overall goal is this is, the goal of this is not to be punitive, but to really make sure that all parties are doing the best they can to address the issue and then move forward from there. So we will make sure to do our part to make, ensure that everyone is informed of that process and of the changes in laws as they roll out.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee, Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted clarification on this amendment that was presented by the President's Office. I think I understand it, but just want to make sure before voting on it. So on page two, bill in first reader version is currently drafted. We're talking about lines 32 through 34. The false alarm fee is waived under the subject subsection. The user is subject to a subsequent false alarm fee. That subsequent fee will be assessed as if the previous fee had not been waived. So for example, just going to go to section B where the residential pieces. And let's go to the fifth penalty. The, the fee for the fifth time is $250. And I would just ask, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, anyone is welcome to interrupt me if I, if I get something wrong. I just want to walk through the scenario and make sure I get it. So the, so the fifth fee as drafted would, would be amended to $250. What this is saying is if a residential property owner does the things in section D, have the alarm system inspected, and then get a certification from the inspector, commissioner has to waive it to go back to the previous one. So essentially what this is saying, as currently drafted, notwithstanding the amendment from the President's Office, that if it's my fifth time, I would be subject to $250, but because I did these two things, the commissioner essentially has to roll me back one. So I would pay the fee as if it were my fourth violation of $150. So my first question is, did I explain that? Is that correct, my understanding? I mean, I, I'm not sure who I'm asking that question to.
I think Nikki would be a good person to answer that because they drafted, but as, as I, this is Elena DePietre from the Law Department. I think it's the opposite of what you just said. I think under the current language, if you get a second fee, it will, if you get, if you have a second false alarm and the first one has been waived, the, the subsequent fee will be assessed as if the previous one had not been waived. So the second one becomes number two.
Well, can we go back to, can we go back to the example I gave Elena, just so I don't get any more confused? So this is, this is my fifth time getting this, that I've had a false alarm. What's that?
No waivers.
No waivers. It's my fifth time. And then I, and then I go out and I have an inspector come and they do their inspection. They say everything's good per section D of the code. Do I have to pay a $250 fee? Or is it rolled back to a $150 fee?
I think it's, I think it's no, it's I think it is your fifth.
So as currently drafted, if it's my fifth time and I haven't received a wire, waiver, then I pay my fifth one, but.
Nina, I would imagine this waiver would be done way before you get to the fifth.
I'm, I'm completely confused by all of this.
Waiver. The waiver is only supposed to be for, from how it was described to us and is already set up with the program. The waiver is for that first, you know, basically if there's some, there's a false alarm or something happened, there's a mechanical issue. The first one is basically a freebie. We're not going to charge you a fine for this first time that you've had to come out and it's a false alarm. So it's a waiver, basically that first one. With, with the amendment, it would make if they have to come out a second time when you get the fine for the second time, because it's determined to be a valid false alarm, it'll be charged at the rate of the first fine versus at the rate of a second fine to make it a true waiver. But as far as, as far as I've, we've discussed with the administration, the waiver only applies to that first go-round. So I would defer to them to describe the the more specific situation that you're just talking about, which is further down the line, and if there's maintenance or upgrading.
So I'm still confused. I'm, I appreciate the response and attempt to help unconfuse me. So you don't get, your first false alarm per section B on page two, after one false alarm in any 12-month period, a false alarm fee is imposed. So the first false alarm that I get, it's just chalked up to, it just happened and I don't have to pay a fee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I got that. So in addition to not having to pay a fee for the first false alarm, I can, I can get a waiver if I do, if I have an inspection, right? And I do all those things.
Yes.
And I can get a waiver after any number of false alarms. It can be after, I wouldn't get it after my first one because my first one wouldn't make sense to burn my waiver, right? Because I, there's no fee to pay. So theoretically, I would, I would apply for a waiver on after my second or more violation in a 12-month period, correct?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, so any reasonable person would not apply for the waiver until after they'd received their second violation in the 12-month period. So as currently drafted in my scenario of the fourth and fifth, I've just received my fifth violation. The first, the first, the first false alarm, I didn't pay anything. The second and the third, I paid 75 each. The fourth time, I paid 150. I just got my fifth one, which should be 250. But I say, you know what? Enough is enough. I'm going to get this thing inspected by a registered inspector that does fire alarms. I provide that to the commissioner. The commissioner waives one false alarm fee. Which false alarm fee as currently drafted is the commissioner waiving?
They're going to waive whatever that previous fee would have been. So if you're on number five, whatever that fifth fee, because it says the subsequent fee will be assessed as if the previous fee had not been waived. So I would say previous would be the most recent.
Can I, can I give that one to the administration? Because this is their language. And then I want to come back and put you back on the hot seat for the amendment, so that I understand that. But so Natasha or Chief Malanson? So in my scenario, the fourth and fifth, I get my fifth one. Which fee is the commissioner going to waive for me? He's waiving that $250?
Well, funny thing, the word commissioner here actually means the Housing Commissioner. So I'm going to have to defer you, yeah, I'm going to have to defer you to the Housing Commissioner.
Let me go right over to Stephanie Murdock. My apologies, Eric. Stephanie or Natasha or Elena?
Thank you. So the current law is that one false alarm occurrence fee will be waived if the alarm user has the alarm system inspected by the registered alarm company and then provide certification that that alarm system was inspected and is functioning properly. If a fee is waived and an additional false alarm activation occurs, that fee will be assessed as if the previous fee has not been waived. So that's the, that's the current regulations.
So Stephanie, can I, can I interject? I appreciate that. So getting back to my, my direct question, I've just, I've just had my fifth false alarm. I, I didn't pay anything for the first one because that's, that's a give me in the law. And then I paid 75 for my second, 75 for my third, 150 for my fourth. I just had my fifth one. I go out and get the inspection. What happens?
The way that I'm reading it is that the waiver occurs before the alarm that has this, after the system has been inspected. Excuse me. So I don't know if it's necessarily associated with the order of occurrence, whether it be the second, third, fourth, or fifth. I believe it's associated with the fact that an inspection occurred and that information was submitted to the commissioner. But this is actually the first time I'm seeing the amendment language. So, you know, I
I'm just, no, thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Chair, I've far exceeded my, my two questions. Can I continue down this line of questioning to get clarification, or would you like to come back to me?
I, I think we should continue because I'm also confused. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Stephanie, just focusing on the bill as drafted, So Stephanie, just focusing on the bill as drafted, notwithstanding the amendment. So your understanding is that the first false alarm after I've applied for the waiver is the fee associated with that that would be waived. So uh, in this instance, it would be the sixth fee that would be waived. I would still have to pay the two hundred and fifty, because my fifth false alarm occurred prior to me going out and getting the inspection and requesting the waiver from the commissioner, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would want to check with our uh, false alarm reduction program just to verify. But that's the way that I'm reading it.
Elena and or Natasha, can, can you chime in if you have anything? If not, I, I understand.
I think what you were saying, I think that Nikki's um, point about the previous fee language sort of says it all. So it's whatever the pre, the alarm, um, the number of the alarm that was immediately previous to that boss that was waived. Does that make sense? No?
No, because, no, thank you for the response. It it doesn't, because I think it's the exact opposite of what Stephanie said. Um, so let me, all right, so let's just, let's just wash the language that's here, because I, I think we're all confused about it. Can we go to, to the council president's amendment? So the council president's amendment says if a false alarm fee is waived under this subsection, and the user is subject to a subsequent false alarm fee, that subsequent fee shall be assessed as if the previous false alarm that resulted in the waiver did not occur. So Nikki, in my example of, I just hit my, I've, I've, I've just hit my fifth uh, false alarm. I didn't pay anything for the first. Uh, I paid my seventy-five for second, seventy-five for my third. I paid my hundred and fifty for my fourth. I was just given notice that I've had my fifth one, right? So presumably I'm going to have to pay two hundred and fifty bucks. But I call an audible and I decide that I'm going to get an inspection and I'm going to apply to the commissioner. What happens in that scenario if your amendment is, if the president's amendment is adopted?
So in that scenario, it would be basically a real waiver. So the fees would go back to what, the fees would basically start over. Because I think in your scenario that you're describing, um, they've got the first false alarm freebie. They have gotten to whatever other step they are, whatever the fees are. I'm ignoring the numbers, because I'm not, that's not my strong suit. So they've gotten to the fifth instance and they've done all these things to mitigate and they've now gotten the waiver. Then in order for this, the subsequent, the subsequent fee from how we're describing it is going to be resulted as if the waiver did not occur. So your first, it's going to revert you back to your first, which would be starting over. That makes sense.
Okay, so let me summarize to make sure I understand that. I think I understand what you said. I'm not sure I understand it from reading the language. So I just got my fifth false alarm. I didn't have to pay anything on one. I paid two, three, and four. I got my fifth one. I go and get an inspection. I apply for the waiver, the commissioner grants the waiver. Do I have to pay the two hundred and fifty dollars for that fifth one that I received?
Not if the waiver is granted. And that was the, exactly what we were trying to get at, the confusion there as well. It was really confusing, quite honestly, about how the waiver was going to work in terms of how the fine was going to be applied. Because you can give a waiver, but actually forgiving the fine and letting the fee schedule be reflected is is different. And so, yes, what you're describing is you would not have to pay the fee under this amendment, because it would basically be starting your fee process over and making the waiver an actual waiver. So a waiving of the fee as well. That's what we were intending to try to get at.
Gotcha, so I just got my fifth one. I applied for the waiver, it was granted. I can throw out the letter from the city about the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. What happens when I get my sixth violation in that twelve month period?
That's what I would defer back to the agency on.
Can I, can I maybe help? Um, so you have gotten the waiver on the fifth one. You don't pay that fee, your letter is thrown out. You get one more. Get one more and it is assessed at the fifth, at the cost of the fifth. Because you got waived at the original fifth, so that it appears on your record as though you only got four. Got one more and now you're at five. You paid two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, if if I could, if I could, council member, maybe, maybe a slightly modified example could be more illustrious. Imagine you're on your third alarm. You're on your third alarm and you go through this process and you get the third alarm waived. What the amendment says is if there is a subsequent activation, right? It would be your fourth, but we're going to treat it like your third, because it's a true. And we're going to assess you the third level fine, not the fourth level. That's the nature of this waiver. So the fifth example gets tricky, because then you go into non-response status. Whole other, whole other ball of wax. And it's the end of the fee schedule. But the idea is that it might be the fourth real activation. But as a true waiver, as the council president's office is explaining, you get, you get it stricken from your record. So you're back to three again. So if a fourth activation does happen for you, they treat it like a third.
Let me summarize, I, I think I finally understand it. The first time you have a false alarm, a fee is not imposed. Or rather, for the sake of conversation, a fee of zero dollars and zero cents is imposed the first time that you get a false alarm. At any point in the process, starting with your second false alarm, you can choose to have an inspection. And if a waiver is granted by the commissioner, that next, that previous or that next instance of a false alarm, you do not have to pay. And then the following um, false alarm, you get reset back to where you would have had to pay. So you're basically, so I guess where I was confused is because we used the, okay, so this is what I would say. No offense to whoever drafted this bill or or um, in the administration, Tony DiFranco, Nikki Thompson, all of who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, uh, and love their work. This is, this is wildly confusing. And if it took fifteen minutes for all of us to decipher this, I don't think any citizen in this city who's not a lawyer is going to have a shot at, at actually understanding this correctly. For me, where the confusion was driven, and it may be different for others on this call, is not imposing the fee versus the waiver and those being two different things. And the second piece of the confusion is, once the waiver is granted, what does the waiver apply to? Does it apply to the previous violation which has been unpaid? Or does it apply to, if I have unpaid the previous violation, do I still have to pay that? And it applies to a subsequent future violation, which has not yet occurred? I would say that's, that's summarizes. I think I understand what we're trying to do. I'm sharing with the group, that's my confusion. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me, for entertaining this for fifteen minutes. And Nikki and Eric and Michelle and Stephanie, Elena and Natasha, thank you for trying to help me understand this.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Stil. I think um, excellent point. Um, the more you dug into that, actually, the more I got confused and and realized it, right? It's not straightforward. Um, I think to that end, um, I, I think we should take a second, look back at this. We're not going to vote on this today. So I want to make sure that the amendment that we put forward is exactly what we want to accomplish with it. So to that end, uh, i- if there aren't any other questions, I want to give that up.
Question, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Please do, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and and thank you uh, uh, to my colleague for um, going through step by step. Um, it uh, sort of goes with what I was asking earlier, but I think taking it step by step was helpful. So thank you. Um, the um, the follow-up then becomes, okay, so you've waived your, you got a waiver for your third. And so then, then it does start, it does say, okay, you got a waiver for your third. So that's considered your second. Then you get up to the fifth. Is that, that's considered your fourth, that's considered your fifth? So if it's, you know, wiped from your record and it's considered your fourth, okay. Then you get to your fifth and let's say you want a separate scenario. Somebody gets to their fifth and wants to have a waiver. So then they, they do, it's the fifth and they want to have a waiver. Do they get a sixth? Do they get us another try? Or is it fifth and it's like, too bad, you had five of them? You know, that's it. But what happens with this waiver provision on number five?
Um, if I may, Councilmember Ramos, when you get to the fifth one, the way we're structuring spill is the idea is then you'll go on the no response list. And I think that's partially why it gets a little confusing once we hit, when we, when we do the scenarios under five no responses. I think um, it's important as we continue to um, explore and understand exactly what we're trying to, what's trying to be accomplished by um, this amendment, that the overall goal is to try to not get people to do four and five and six false alarms. The idea being that we really, rather than continue to find people, we want to and to really give them the incentive to fix the issue itself. Um, and so, you know, but just going back to your example, once you hit number five, there wouldn't be six or seven, because at that point you would be um, cut off.
Okay, so there would be no waiver for number five. Um, I have a, I have a, a real, a separate question on the bill, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, my colleague talked about notification of the alarm companies. Do currently the alarm companies also get a notification when there's a false alarm?
And I defer to the housing department on notification protocols. Sorry.
Yes, I, I believe they do. Um, and like I said, I'm going to need to go back and check with our uh, false alarm program about this. Um, I do believe Eric explained it accurately as far as the waiver is concerned and a fee being waived and additional false activations that occur will be assessed as if the previous fee has not been waived. So it's almost like it takes you a step down. Um, but I'm also happy to follow up with the false alarm program on that. I believe this amendment, if I'm reading it correctly, is codifying the uh, language that's already in our false alarm reduction program. But I'm, I'm happy to check on that.
Can I follow up, Mr. Chair? Um, so I was, I was asking separately around, you know, do the note, do the um, companies get notified that there's been a false alarm? So that at least they know that there's a problem and can be, you know, proactive? Do we have that kind of communication with the companies? Because, you know, we're always punishing the resident here and I do want to make sure that the companies are also getting some sort of notice um, that they are kind of responsible for also following up. So do they get a notice when there's a false alarm?
I, I do believe that to be the case, but I again want to check in with the false alarm program and just to be certain.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from the committee? All right, we're, we're not going to, um, we're not going to vote on this today. So um, I, I think it sounds like we just want to dot our i's and cross our t's on the amendments and the structure of the bill as it, as it stands. So there's not too jargony and confusing. Um, so we're going to go on a recess for this bill. Uh, I want to give um, two minutes. So at um, one forty-seven, we're going to move on to the next bill. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started back up. Um, next we're going to hear uh, bill twenty-one dash zero zero five nine, study and report succession planning. For the purpose of requiring the Department of Human Resources in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city, uh, city council examining the short and long term sustainability of the city's internal workforce to ensure that we are able to provide and maintain appropriate service delivery standards for our constituents and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Robert Stokes. Um, Councilmember Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair, I just have some open remarks. Our employees are the greatest asset that we have in delivering city services to our constituents. But a large number of those individuals are eligible for retirement and will be leaving city government over the next couple of years. For decades, government employment has opened doors to middle-class life for thousands of workers. It has provided individuals with the capabilities to buy homes, raise families, and build lifelong friendship with colleagues. In anticipation of this workforce transition that is upon us, this legislation sets the foundation for us to be proactive, to take a proactive approach to forecast entry level and management needs of the city over the next five years. But more importantly, it will look at what systems we currently have in place and which ones we need to be created aggressively and hire, aggressively hire and promote current city, Baltimore City resident employees to these positions. I would like to thank Chairman Conway and the members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee for taking the time to hear this legislation. I also like to thank the agencies for participating in a much leading conversation. And I look forward to working with each, each and one of you as we continue to work on providing, the providing pathways into city government that will create generational change for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. And I, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I know this is an issue that we, um, we see on the horizon as a major problem for the city. And um, I want to thank you for bringing it forward and and bringing attention to it. Um, the next, next, we're going to go into agency reports. Um, please state your name as, as I call upon your agency. First, we've got the Law Department. Elena, you're muted, we can't hear you.
Okay, sometimes I just hit it twice and it goes back on mute. So anyway, Elena DePietro from the Law Department. Um, I've reviewed this bill carefully and um, and you know, it has, it has a lot of good parts to it. I think, however, it does go over the line a bit in a couple of places between the executive and legislative authorities. So I suggested two amendments um, that would, that would help the bill to move forward without stepping uh, uh, over the boundary into the executive function of the Department of Human Resources in these areas. So um, the, my suggested amendments are, and they're in my reports in about, in the last paragraph, that um, on page one, line nine, after, let's see, after ordinance in line nine, you insert um, or at such time as the director of DHR determines it's feasible to reduce the report required by this section. Because tech, technically, that really is the director's, you know, prerogative to run his department. And when he has to be able to do his, his statutory and charter duties and may need additional time um, in this, in this type of arena. Uh, and then the, the other amendment is on page two, after line six. Again, um, in order to uh, give the director his uh, due um, authority with respect to um, the, you know, developing strategies for hiring and retaining local residents or um, or employees in general, I would suggest adding a number seven that would say any other information or analysis that the director determines is relevant to a report on succession planning. That would give them the leeway to put in other information that is important to that topic. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we've got the Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Quentin Herbert uh, from the Department of Human Resources. We stand by our bill report. Um, and we would also just defer to the comments. We stand by our bill report, and we would also just defer to the comments that were made by Mr. Petriello previously.
I believe you, you guys also submitted an amendment.
Yes, the, the amendment was also on page one, line nine. We did not think that 120 days was feasible. While we do think 180 days is doable, to Mr. Petriello's point, we do want to be able to produce a thorough quality report. And sometimes when we have that, that time restriction, we sometimes sacrifice the, a quick report for a quality report. We want to make sure that we have a quality succession planning report, one that, that talks about how we can better build the bench throughout city government, which is something that the city has struggled with for quite some time.
Awesome. Thank you, Director. Next, we'll move on to the Employees Retirement System.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I'm David Randall, Director of Directum Employees Retirement System. Now coming, there are no proposed benefit changes or improvements, and there are no parts in the city or to the plan. We, the Employees Retirement System, take no position regarding this City Council bill, and we're able to provide a report that is requested with the number of retirees that are eligible for agency at any given time.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. We're gonna move on to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. And if you can mute yourself? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. This is Mackenzie Garvin from MoED. We have provided written testimony, and we do stand by our written report, and we are in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Next, I've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative and Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. We would be happy to use it as part of the Budget Office's work around planning for the budget during years. We did just want to note that while the report calls out the Bureau of the Budget and Management Research to be a part of this, we would have very limited data that could actually provide DHR on this report. So we would see ourselves in probably having a very limited role in this study report, but would look forward to using it as we do budget planning for the future. Thank you.
Good to know, thank you. And then last but not least, we have the Baltimore City Public School System.
Good afternoon. My name is Kamasi Vines, and I'm Director of Career Readiness for Baltimore City Public Schools. It's nice to see so many familiar faces again. We are definitely in support of this, and I just wanted to quickly highlight some of the partnerships that we have with various city agencies that are working towards this. We're working with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to match our CTE students, who are youth workers, who are positioned that are aligned with their pathways over the summer. We have a partnership with Moed as well, and Baltimore's Promise with Grads to Careers that teaches recent graduates different skills and, and skills and trades in careers that are leading to living, above living wage positions. And with our youth opportunity, our Yo locations is a partnership with Moed as well that links, provides services for young adults 17 to 24, community-based, community-based educational, workforce preparation, and personal development services. We also, as right now, going on as a senior recruitment fair, that we're working with Moed and the Work-Based Learning Team we have in my office that provides graduating seniors with opportunity to connect with employers. We have nearly 200 of those seniors registered, and city agencies, of course, are attending and recruiting at this event that is going on all this week. I also want to highlight just a couple of different relationships that we are building when it comes, when it comes to city agencies. The Baltimore City Fire Department, we have current fire EMT, CTE pathways at some of our schools, Douglas Patterson, Vivian T., and Dunbar. And the Fire Department is, will potentially become an Apprenticeship Maryland program site for us. And really quickly, Apprenticeship Maryland is a state program that allows students in CTE pathways to actually earn a wage while they are working as an apprentice in different types of businesses. Requires 450 hours over the course of the summer, spring break, weekends, evenings during the school year. So it's a really great opportunity to, for an employer to experience our students in, in a work environment. And Balt-, again, Baltimore City Fire Department is potentially going to become, become one of those, those locations. We also have a partnership with the Baltimore City, the Baltimore Police Department through our Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, Criminal Justice Law Enforcement CTE Pathway, and is currently located at Patterson High School in Reach. And we are re-envisioning how, what that program is gonna look like. We definitely have a commitment of the Police Department in working with us and developing that. And just one other quick note, going back to Apprenticeship Maryland, we recently presented to the Apprenticeship Committee, which is a collection of the city agencies that offer apprenticeships for adults. And we're building those relationships because it seems to be a strong interest in helping build that pipeline of potential future city employees starting in high school. And as a, you know, former city employee myself, hearing the opening remarks by Councilman Stokes, it really gets me excited about this potential opportunity to continue to build relationships with city agencies and create that pathway for our students for gainful employment. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vines. Good, good to see you too. It's been a while. So, so with, with that, I want to open the floor to, oh, I also want to acknowledge first, Councilman Cohen, she's still in the meeting. Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Two questions from the committee.
And I'll start it off. Yeah.
Councilman Stokes, yes.
I guess this is for him. We want to answer, does the city of Baltimore currently have a citywide succession planning program? If so, can you talk about it? If not, tell us why we don't.
I, I'll speak to that. Right now, there is no citywide succession planning policy. And part of the, part and parcel, the reason why that is, sir, is because there, there is no one-size-fits-all way in which we succession plan. We believe that that should take place at the agency level, that each agency should routinely look at their data. We do work with human resources practitioners across the enterprise and the various agencies to identify those positions where individuals are retiring, where there will be vacancies, and where some of those vacancies are hard to fill, and how we go about developing a recruitment and a recruitment strategy to reach talent to pipeline into those hard-to-fill positions. But to your point, I think that we should be forecasting and looking ahead at when, we, we know for a fact, we know that just under 60% of our workforce is retirement-eligible. And so we know that with that, a lot of institutional knowledge goes out the door when folks retire because we don't effectively plan to transition new talent into those positions. And so one of the things that we are looking to do as we continue to work with the agency HR leadership is to identify those positions where we know that they are hard to fill, where we have vacancies, where folks are retiring after a tenured season. And we are promoting mentorships and coaching whereby those tenured employees are sharing that knowledge with more junior employees and encouraging more junior employees to take on increasing levels of responsibilities within the agencies. That is a culture change that is taking place routinely, and we are promoting that and working with the HR leaders across the city government. I will say that prior to my tenure, there wasn't a lot of opportunity for Central DHR to kind of work with the agency HR practitioners routinely around these types of issues. I will say that now we have weekly HR leaders' meetings where we address these types of topics. And so we are getting better at having folks reach down, and as I talked about earlier, building a bench and identifying talent that has the capacity to do more, that will be the future leaders of tomorrow within the agency, and, and figuring out how we can engage them and retain them.
I think I just have one more question. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Just kind of talked about what you talked about, Mr. Herbert. Over the last 25 years, Baltimore City has adopted practice of routinely appointing outsiders to lead city agencies. What role do you think a lack of succession planning plays in us not preparing internal talent to assume those positions?
I think a couple of things, because I, I actually sit in a position where I'm an exception to that rule. I, I was promoted from within the city government. I worked for the Labor Commissioner before I took on my present role. I think she's on the call. And I think that I was very well-prepared in that office to take on the responsibilities that I now have as the Director of Human Resources. And it goes back to, one of the things that I mentioned previously, is that we have to do a better job of giving our current employees opportunities to take on more responsibility and to learn. Leadership is, is a learned talent. You, you learn that competency by leading. And so I think that one of the things that we need to do a better job of is to, first, identify that talent on the front end, and then secondly, provide opportunities for those folks to learn and to, to engage. Now, as we, as we talk about positions that require a particular skill, knowledge, or credential, there may be employees within city government that may not have that required knowledge, skill, or credential. And what we have to do there is we have a, we have a top-notch learning and development office where we are reaching out to agencies. We have a catalog of trainings that will allow for professional development of our employees who want to pursue higher levels of leadership in their respective career path. So it's incumbent on, on us to, to continue to promote that learning and development office and the offerings that we have. And also, it's incumbent on managers to then allow their staff the ability to, to participate in those trainings and gain that, that professional development. So when those opportunities arise, these employees are thoroughly prepared to step into those leadership positions and to take those roles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. That was my last question.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes, and thanks for answering the questions, Director Herbert. I have another one. Of course, one of the biggest barriers in any organization is the transition from worker to supervisor. And understanding that hurdle, does the Department of Human Resources have any city agency or any other city agency offer new supervisors' training or any assistance in helping with that, that, that transition?
Yes, we do. We do have a supervisory boot camp that we very recently revamped. In the last fiscal year, we were able to obtain funding for training. Prior to last year, agencies had to reimburse DHR for basic trainings, for new employee orientation, let's say, for that supervisory training. So as you can imagine, for agencies that did not, did not have a training budget, that proved to be a hurdle for them to get those, those first-time managers training. We now have a fully funded program for those basic trainings. So now new employee orientation is, is now fully funded. Supervisory training is now fully funded. Training around regulations that all employees are responsible to know is fully funded. And so what we are working to do now through our Office of Policy and Compliance is crafting a policy that would make supervisory training mandatory within the first six months of promotion. Because we do feel that that training is so critically important to the success, particularly of first-time people leaders, because it is a different skill set from widget-making to becoming a widget-maker supervisor, if you will. And so we believe that that training is critically important. Our policy team is currently working on crafting policy that would make it mandatory for agencies to send their first-time supervisors to supervisory training within six months of that promotion. I believe that that, again, is critically important to their success and them understanding the new role that they have as a people leader.
Thank you for explaining that. And I, one of the other questions I have was something that, you know, kind of piqued my interest about this issue initially. If you could give me, to your best estimation, the number of employees that the city currently employs, and then what number or percentage of those employees are eligible for retirement? I asked that question because at one point I knew that when I worked for the city and the mayor's office, we knew that within five years, 60% of the, the folks who worked for the city would be eligible for retirement. Do we have a sense of where we are in that regard now?
Yeah, and, 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 Mr.
Can you mute your, yourself, please? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chair. And we can give you a ballpark in terms of employees. We are just under 13,000 currently. And as I mentioned earlier, about, just below 60%, about 56% or 57% of those, maybe off by a percentage point or two, are, are retirement-eligible. That doesn't mean that we're gonna lose them immediately, but it, it does mean that if they should decide that they want to retire, they, they have that option. And so a, as you can imagine, that's quite a, that's quite a huge chunk of the, the city's workforce that is retirement-eligible.
Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions from the councilmembers?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Councilwoman Ramos?
I have a question for the Law Department. Mr. Petro, on your report, it talks about, one of the amendments you're proposing is inserting, "Or such time as the Director of DHR determines it feasible to produce a report." I don't recall, and I'm new, so forgive me, but my understanding is that generally, if the council is asking for a report in a certain amount of time, that that's okay, and that that's when we get the report. There are other bills that we've asked for reporting and that kind of thing that, you know, then don't have a, we don't then have the stipulation that says, "We want it in a year, but whenever they get it to us is fine." That's, so I thought that we should still keep, I mean, 180 days is fine, but we should keep a solid deadline and not necess-, because I haven't seen any other bill where there's also that disclaimer at the end saying, "But if we don't get it done, we can get it done later." I'd rather not have that. So can you talk a little bit about the fact that we haven't seen that in other bills?
Well, I can't speak to, you know, what was being done in, in another bill report. I just don't know. But I just, once, you know, I did a lot of research into this because of the nature of the, of the ask, and it was a lot of work. And, and I, I, there's a big distinction between legislative authority and executive authority. Legislative authority is making the laws, executive authority is executing the laws. And in the case of the Department of Human Resources, they have comprehensive authority under the Charter to run that department. Some, like, for example, the bill we're gonna hear next, the Fire Department. The Fire Department is almost exclusively under the control of the City Council. So it really depends on the department you're talking about and how much charter authority they are given as opposed to other department, like the Department of, for the Fire Department, which under the Charter and the express powers, the City Council is given significant authority over the operations of the Fire Department. So it really does depend on the department in terms of whether that type of, of provision is, is, is an impingement on their executive authority or not.
Okay, so we don't, I'd be interested to see other examples where we had a report, but then it, it then had the disclaimer that it would be fine if it's later. But I, I understand the distinction, and I appreciate that explanation. And then I don't know if the sponsor has agreed to these amendments and if they were already redone by DLR or not.
I'll jump in here. I'm not sure if the sponsor has had a chance to review these amendments and decide whether or not. Comfortable with it. But I do know that it has not been drafted by DLR at the moment. Councilman Stokes, you can chip in if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I was, I know some Councilmember said something about the amendments.
Right, that's right. The Law Department proposed two amendments, one particularly around The Law Department proposed two amendments, um, one particularly around the the requirement to uh put a date on the delivery of um this report. Um, and she wanted to know if you were comfortable with the amendments is put forward by the Law Law Department.
Yeah, I'm I'm comfortable with the with the amendments. I I didn't have a problem. And then Mr. Petro kind of explained it in more detail. I mean, I didn't have a problem with it. Why, Councilwoman, you had questioned about it again?
Uh, no, Councilman, I was just curious as the sponsor if you had um if you had uh gotten them drafted or had any um issue with it. My my question was just on this date and um, you know, whether we had had other reporting that had also allowed for this other timeframe after. Um, so that that was my main question, but I I I appreciate the dialogue. Thank you.
Sure.
Don't say.
Uh, what what I'll try to cut to the middle of this um for D H R. Um, with the amendment as put forward at a hundred and eighty days, do you think that would suffice and give you enough time to do the report? If we um if we address those concerns there?
I I'm I'm comfortable with a hundred and eighty days. I'm comfortable that we can have a report to report back out in a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, thanks. I think if that is the case, um, I I still feel comfortable um moving forward with this. Uh, any other questions from folks on the committee? Or uh or the the sponsor?
Uh, Mr. Chair, do you have a question?
Uh, Councilwoman Porter, go for it.
Thank you. Um, what happens? Um, what what's the after, what's the after effect if 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 said report is not submitted to the council after a hundred and eighty days? And forgive.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, answer that question. We can.
Please do, Mr.
In the bill itself, there is no recourse for a late report.
Thank you, Mr. Petro.
Sure.
But I think we all like to play nice in sandbox, so I'm sure they'll do their best.
No, it was it was no no shade to them. I just wanted to ask them.
Awesome. I see uh Councilman Costello, you have your your hand up. Do you have you have a question?
No, sir. I can't unlower my hand from the previous hearing, but while you call on me, Kamasi, it's great to see you. Glad to see you're doing well.
Thank you. Good to see you too, Councilman. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the committee or from the uh bill sponsor? With that, we'll move on to public testimony. Uh, once again, as we explained earlier in the in the hearing, um, please use the right hit raise hand function on the bottom right, and we will uh choose you. Uh, I see Hassan. Hassan, you've been unmuted. You've got two minutes to testify.
Hi, yes. Peaceful greetings to everyone. Uh, thank you. Uh, just in hearing this one, and again, I'm Brother Hassan, guys, you'll bet uh for the record. In in hearing this and hearing the report, uh, I think what I have is not actually a question as much as a suggestion, maybe maybe assisting uh Mr. Quentin Herbert. Um, me me actually knowing him from uh much younger years, when I was much younger, um, and I remember him as someone that was very uh pointed in being an example in my neighborhood growing up. So I was wondering, would it help with producing the report in a hundred and eighty days by making miniscule reports every thirty? So that by the time the culmination comes to actually provide a full report in the hundred and eighty days, it won't be as taxing to provide a full report once it has been done in a bit by bit fashion, if that's possible. And if I sound and uh like I may not be full in what I'm uh speaking on, just me observing the, you know, the discourse here, I just wanted to make sure, would that be a viable suggestion? And I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Hassan. Um, you you're unable to ask questions as as a uh during testimony, but I I'm sure the department will take your thoughts into consideration. Um, any other testimony, uh, please do use the raise hands hand function on the bottom right. Seeing no further testimony in the chat, um, do we have any other callers? There are no callers.
Mr. Chair, I have one question real quick, if that's all right?
Yes, please go ahead, Councilman Stokes.
Um, can we, can you talk to us about local, what local recruitment initiatives or apprenticeship programs the city has in place? And how we market those opportunities to city residents?
I'll start with the apprenticeship program. The city has a very robust uh apprenticeship program. In fact, uh, I believe if 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 Councilwoman Middle um Middleton were on, she would talk about how we have the uh oldest apprenticeship program in the country. Um, the uh Labor Commissioner's Office uh oversees uh that program along with AFSME and Cub. Uh, we have apprentices in D P W, Wreckin Parks, um, in Fleet. Um, the um, the the Fleet Department started a a program on its own initiative where they went out to uh Edmondson Westside High School and uh Murvo High School and donated vehicles and other equipment uh to to the to the students there. And also brought the students in for a summer program where they interned at the Fleet Department. That internship turned into uh full time employment for a number of those interns. Um, we also are working, as you heard from Mr. Vines, in on several fronts with Baltimore City Schools to identify uh students where college may not be the first option, and they are entering into the workforce to identify areas where we can recruit them. We also work with Mayor's Office of Employment Development to source talent for positions. There are some positions where uh we source talent through M O E D to hire city residents uh into into positions and to make sure that we have a diverse uh pool of candidates uh for those positions. Um, when we are talking about uh civil service positions, the Civil Service has rules regarding how positions are to be posted and how lists are to be created. And so w- we follow those rules and regulations. However, we are sensitive to the fact uh that we are attempting to identify city residents and source talent within our city, and we use all of those vehicles that are available to us to do that. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, real quick, the we those um statements that Mr. Herbert made in terms of apprenticeship at different locations, is any way we can get a the report back, see what that look like? I guess to the committee or the whole council, because I think the whole council prob- I know that's interested in this apprenticeship training, because you, again, you said it, Mr. Herbert. We got to make sure we have those opportunities for those uh students who are not going to attend college, not want to attend college. And I wanted to mention, because about a year and a half ago, I brokered a deal with uh B triple C and the school system, and we were about to open up Murvo and Emerson Westside Skill Center in the evening for apprenticeship training for from from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, but unfortunately, pandemic came. So we, I'm back in conversation with um Vice President Michael Thomas to see how we can now start that back up um virtually. So if we can get those reports back, I appreciate it. Thank you.
N- noted, I'll work I'll work with the Office of the Labor Commissioner and respond back, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Stokes. Um, are there any other questions from the committee? Before we move forward? Excellent. We're going to move on to uh the amendments. We have, I believe, one amendment drafted.
Mr. Chair, my amendments are are in the report, so they're drafted. They just aren't drafted by D H R, by D L R.
Okay, um, I think I think we're still going to move forward the bill, and um we can we can have those amendments drafted for the second reader. One moment. You got it? Uh, Mr. Vines, um, you you right now have control of the meeting. Can you make sure to give it back to uh council staff?
Yes, wanted to make sure I got it here. One second, please.
Okay, um, excellent. So um, once again, this is the this is one of three amendments. Uh, the Law Law Department has two amendments that effectively try to accomplish exactly what is trying to be accomplished right here. Uh, I'll I'll allow um D H R to to explain the amendment, and and if you want to give any additional insight, Director Herbert, please feel free to do so. You're muted.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, the amendment would be to uh in on page one, line nine, to strike one twenty and and substitute that with one hundred and eighty, so a hundred and eighty days.
Just lengthening the amount of time. I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, and then also, just for clarification, uh, the two amendments that were um put in the bill report um by Mr. Petro of the Law Department are effectively trying to allow the same thing to give D H R enough time to do this report. Uh, well, one gives enough time, um, and then the second one would allow D H R to add additional information as needed to the report. And so what we're going to do, we're going to move forward on the amendments. Um, and then we'll be able to also move forward on the amendments before by the Law Department in the second reader. I don't think that's a reason to hold up the bill here. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion. Is there?
So moved, Collins.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Is there a second?
Second, Ramos.
I got a second from Glover. Awesome. Thank you. Um, so moved by Cohen, second by Glover. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover? Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Uh, the amendment passes uh with unanimous vote. Uh, is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendments?
So move.
Moved by Porter?
Second by Glover.
Second by Glover. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Awesome. The the bill passes unanimously, and we'll move to second reader at the next council hearing. Uh, thank you so much. We are going to give another two minute break before we move on to the next bill, twenty one dash zero zero six zero. I will will re uh reconvene at two twenty eight. All right, it is two twenty eight. We're going to jump back into um our next bill, Bill twenty one dash zero zero six zero. Studying report Fire Department promotional practices for the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department submit a report to the Mayor and Senior Ca- uh City Council evaluating certain promotional practices of the department, specifying the contents of the report and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on April fifth, twenty twenty one, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. And I open the floor to Councilman Burnett.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Uh, and so I I I keep my remarks pretty short, um, because I think the bill is pretty straightforward. Uh, this is uh asking the fire.
Councilman Burnett, you're breaking up.
Hello?
Yep, we 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 didn't hear anything you said.
Okay.
It might help to turn off your your video for a second. No, we can't hear you. No, we still can't hear you.
Am I coming in now?
Yeah, you're coming. I can hear you now, but you're coming in and out.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay. Me, yeah, sorry about that. Um, so uh it's pretty pretty straightforward. Um, bill that's uh looking into, it's a continuation of what we've been working on in the committee um uh to to do that sort of deeper dive into a a number of issues that were raised in the uh twenty.
Looks like we lost Councilman Burnett. Uh, give me a second. I'm going to try and reach out to him. Councilman Burnett? We we can't hear you anymore.
If you could give me two minutes, I'm going to try and jump on a hotspot. Hold on.
Sure, we're going to do that. We're just going to give Councilman Burnett a couple of minutes to to get back on and present the bill.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. Um, so, oh, uh, a- again, before I I'll keep it e- even shorter, so I don't lose connection again. Uh, so it's a reporting bill that's building off of the work that we've been doing in this committee uh to look at the hiring and promotional practices uh within the department. Uh, the uh bill uh does a couple of quick things. Um, it 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 asks the agency to report out on uh sort of the supervisory paths that people have within the department, uh, a review of educational requirements and testing, uh, in in analysis of uh other departments uh in their sort of uh practices around uh hiring and firing and promotions. And it also um looked at, you know, just additional supervisory tracks, ask for an equity assessment, often effort to just a a more clear picture for this committee uh around uh ways that we can improve the diversity uh within the department, especially when we talk about the leaders, the ranks of leadership, uh, which, if you, you know, everyone, as the the bill report, does a, I think, a very good job at laying out uh the uh sort of such the issues that exist currently with the lack of diversity in age and gender and race uh within the the higher ranks of the department. Uh, and so it's, i- i- I think it'll be a good tool for us to to further assess how and and working collaboration with the Fire Department to create more paths for people of color, for women, uh, to rise through the ranks in the Baltimore City Fire Department. Uh, and I'll stop there before I lose connection again.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Um, so we'll um move on to the agency reports. Please state your name before um for speaking. We're going to start off with the Law Department.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Elena de Pedro Filo. Um, the Law Department approves this bill for formally sufficiency.
The Law Department approves this bill for formally sufficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Petro. Onto Department of Human Resources.
Hi. Hello, sir. This is Joanne Ashton. I am Director Herbert. I'm the Chief of HR Shared Services and Recruitment, and we have no issue with this bill, and we fully are in support of it.
Thank you. Onto the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon again. Executive Assistant Chief Roman Clark. And Baltimore City Fire Department stands by their report. We have no objections to this bill.
Awesome, thank you. And we're going to move on to the Baltimore City Administrator's Office.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Sunny Schnitzer, Deputy Mayor for Public Safety. On behalf of the City Administrator, we are in support of this bill.
Awesome, thank you, Sunny. Next, we've got the Labor Commissioner. I think we may have lost the Labor Commissioner. To that end, we'll move on to the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dana Moore. I am the Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. I am also the niece of the very first African American to integrate a fire department in the city of Denver, Colorado. That happened in 1956. My uncle's name is Robert Nickerson, and he applied for promotions numerous times throughout his career and was never able to advance. So it is with a lot of humility and recognition of our history and where we want to go as a city that the Office of Equity and Civil Rights enthusiastically supports this bill.
Thank you, Director Moore. And finally, we have the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation similar to the prior bill, Studying Report Bill. BBMR, the City's Budget Office, has called out specifically in this report. And while we can provide some historical budget data that may be of assistance, we would defer to FIRE and other agencies as experts on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. I'm going to move on to questions from the committee, and I'll start with questions from the sponsor. Councilman Burnett, do you want to start with any questions?
The, the most general for the committee's understanding would just be asking the, the fire department to explain, so we all sort of have a grasp, at least going into the report, on the rank structure for fire suppression and EMS.
Fire Department, you want to explain?
Councilman, you're asking for a rank structure? Is that, is that the question? Am I correct?
Yeah, rank, rank structure for FIRE and EMS.
So for FIRE, on FIRE's side, starting, you have firefighters, and you also have EMTs, POs, then you have a lieutenant, then a captain, and then battalion chiefs. Those are all promotional exams that come through civil service. Moving forward to appointments for deputy chief, assistant chiefs, those are, are appointed by the chief of the fire department at that point. Those are appointments. They, they, they're at will positions. That's on the FIRE side. On EMS side, you also have rank structures. You have EMTs, paramedics, and you have lieutenant in EMS. You have captains in EMS, and you have battalion chiefs in EMS. And then you have a deputy chief's position, which is an appointed position for, that oversees the entire EMS structure. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does. And my second question, Mr. Chair, is just a quick follow-up. Within that structure, which ranks are required to participate in written and oral exams?
The written and oral exams are participated with the, from the lieutenants, captains, and battalion chiefs. They go through written and oral examinations. The structure beyond that, they go through interview examinations with the panels that may be selected by the chief, and most of those panels are public people that sit on the panels.
I have a couple more questions, but I'll defer to the rest of the committee, Mr. Chair. I don't want to tap on the two, two question.
Sure, I'll, I'll open up the, the Florida questions from the committee. I have one of my own that I want to just ask if that's okay, and of the, the fire department. So in, in 1993, the Baltimore Police Department converted the police captains from a civil service position to an at-will position. And it's been said that that policy change was what opened the door for more blacks and women to join the command ranks of that department. What are your thoughts about converting the battalion chief rank to an at-will position? And what impact do you think that would have in diversifying your command staff?
Mr. Chair, I'd rather wait to see how an investigation, I have a perspective about this, but I'd rather wait until we, we do the, the study that's, that's proposed by, by the council so we could get a better grasp on it, because there are certain dynamics that involve contractual agreements that, that I think it wouldn't be reasonable for me to speak on.
Okay, okay, I can appreciate that. I'll, I'll open the floor to questions from the committee before we head back to the sponsor. Seeing the questions, I'll, I'll turn it over to Councilman Burnett if you've got additional questions you'd like to ask.
Yeah, I have one for the Oh.
Oh, please, go ahead, Councilman Glover.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so four of the five top, four, excuse me, four of the five top people to be promoted to that law chief of African American. And this is just going to the fire department. You know, do you have, excuse me, I'm sorry, you have at least two openings in your command staff that would allow you to hire one or two African Americans to be promoted? Those vacancies have been like sitting there for a very, a long time, while I have it, and on the fire department fill those vacancies, allowing more African Americans to be promoted.
Um, Councilman, thanks for the question. We, we currently, because of, because COVID, we had certain people sitting in certain positions in order to manage COVID. And, and also I was evaluating in particular one position, whether or not I was going to civilianize that position. And I considered that primarily because the skill set required for it. In fact, I moved around resources, at least I moved around responsibilities to see if it was really simple to do that. And I've been, we've been basically running a test on that up until this point. And I'm just, I'm close to making a decision on what I am going to do with those positions.
Do you know, do you, like, can you give the council like a timeframe on, although you say you're very close, but you know, what, what do you define close? I know you, you said that we've, it's been a whole bad because of COVID. And we, many of these positions, you know, were, were open, like, prior to COVID. So that's why I'm asking, when, when do you expect, when you say very soon? Can you just give us a timeframe when that, please? Thank you.
I, I would give an estimate, but I, I don't want to solidify it. The next two to three months is pretty much when I plan on making my decision, but things could occur that would stop me from doing that, and I'd be more than happy to discuss that with you.
All right, thank you, sir. Let me give this a chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Any other questions from the committee? I'll turn it back over to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was directed to the Law Department. As a result of the 1973 Harper versus Mayor, City Council, Mayor, Marion City Council of Baltimore, the required years of service to take promotional exams went from five years to three years based off of disparate impact studies showing that most blacks didn't meet the requirement to participate in the process. If the city wanted to change the years of service requirement back to five years, would, in your assessment, and maybe you want to email this later, and would we have to do a disparate impact study, or is this a policy change that could be made by the fire chief?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to the question, Councilman Burnett, but I'm happy to look into it and see what the requirements are and if they still are effective from that case.
Okay.
You could email me the name of the case, and we'll go from there.
Will do. I'll send you the question right now.
Thanks, Senator.
Based on the, Mr. Chair, based on the, the chief's concerns about, I guess, some of the labor negotiations, I'm going to hold off on the rest of my questions.
Thank you. I, I actually have another pair of questions that I think would be helpful for wrapping my head around this. So on, on average, for the fire department, how much do you spend on promotional, on the promotional testing process for fire suppression and emergency management service tracks?
Councilman, I don't know exactly what the answers for that is. I'll, I'll try to get it while we're still on. If I cannot get it, I will forward it to you in writing.
Okay. I had a follow-up question to that, that I think would be relevant. What I can do is make sure that we share those questions for you for consideration. With that, any other questions for the fire department? Seeing the questions, we'll move on to public testimony. I see, I see Josh Fannin. Let's hand up. Josh, you've got two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josh Fannin, President of Baltimore Fire Officers Local 964. I just wanted to express that overall, our local is in support of Councilmember Burnett's bill here. We had a lengthy conversation, and I was happy for him. Happy to hear him bring up what I think would be an issue with number four, which was, he kicked over to the legal department. So for us to get a better clarification on that, he referenced the Harper versus Mayor and City Council of Baltimore suit from 1973, which states in part, as part of the court ruling, timing grade requirements for promotion to lieutenant shall be no longer than three years. On page 1218, continue on 19, the time in 12, and the timing grade prereq for promotion to other officer positions shall be no longer than one year. That was a decision from the Federal District Court of Maryland back in 1973, so I guess they would have to report back on its applicability today. Also, we are strongly opposed to number seven, exploring any interest in making a battalion chief position an at-will position. We feel that that would make merit no longer matter in the promotional system. Our local represents 40 battalion chiefs, that's the entirety of the battalion chiefs in the City Fire Department. 12% of our local are battalion chiefs. They are very happy, 100% members in our, in our union. And also, Councilman Glover, I would also like to commend noted correctly that our current battalion chief list, number one, number three, and number four, African American males who have been sitting patiently awaiting promotion, which has been slowed down. We heard from Chief Ford as to why that might be. We are hoping that that picks up again, because they have been very patiently waiting to see their promotion. I don't believe that moving to an at-will system would, would, would have, provide any benefit whatsoever, as opposed to the way the system is now. It just needs, we just really need to get the system unclogged and moving again, so that these promotions can happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Any other questions, excuse me, any other testimony? Please use the raise hand function at the bottom right of your screen.
You can do it, where's?
I see Hassan has got his hand up. Hassan, you, you've got two minutes.
Thank you again. I, I think I kind of get it here. Maybe, this is just another suggestion. Maybe if those positions for those three beings to be promoted, and I think I heard it was something due to COVID, so I guess after reading the CARES Act, what kind of relief financially, since COVID only affects federal banking systems only? We were, we were figuring, I was thinking here, maybe as a suggestion, it would be best to see what's going on financially to fill those positions. Are you?
Thank you, Hassan. Any further testimony before, before we go to the lines? Anybody on the line? Okay, I don't see anybody on the line, so we are going. But Chief Ford?
Yes, sir. I didn't, I didn't want to just break in and speak. Thank you. I, I want to address two things. The, the President Josh Fannin brought up that there's people waiting in queue to be promoted. They're not waiting in queue to necessarily be promoted because of decisions I've made at a higher level, because those are pointed positions. I could even bring people in from outside. The first African American female that we had in the organization as assistant chief, I brought in from outside. So they're not necessarily waiting for that. They're waiting for people to retire in the battalion chief ranks. That's normally how succession happens in those organizations, because the upper seats don't move as quickly usually. So it's not, it's not a position where, where it moves around from that perspective. The, the, the other component, I wanted to add a little bit of clarity, because I may, I may have not been as clear as I should have been. What held me up in, in, in respect of COVID is I needed to put people in certain positions in order to manage processes that we had in order to mitigate COVID. And because now we're, we're heading into a different circumstance, where it, it, it gives me the ability to make some decisions I can make now.
Thank you, Chief Ford. With that, do we have any amendments? There are no amendments. So the Chair will entertain a motion to move the bill favorable.
I'm sorry, both. Wait, did you move it or seconded it? I'll move it.
You guys got to make up your mind. I'll give a movement to Porter, the second to Burnett, all right? So moved by Porter, second by Burnett. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes, Mr. Chair, may I explain my vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm super, super excited that we're, we're, we're talking about this in, in the lens of racial equity. I would like to also just to elevate our, our trans brothers and sisters as it relates to these types of hiring practices. They are often left out of the equation, and so I just want to ensure that as we are tackling the racial equity piece to, to the hiring practice, particularly in FIRE, I just want to elevate that there are other disparities that, that should be elevated as well. And so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Last, we've got Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Awesome. So this will pass seven, seven yeses to zero noes. We will present it at the upcoming council hearing. That said, are there any final closing comments from the sponsor?
I'm looking forward to the report and continued dialogue.
Awesome. Thank you. This hearing is adjourned, and I look forward to seeing you guys in a couple weeks. Good one.